Today's September the 7th, 2021, and this is the work session for the Salisbury City Council. First up is our update on the Chesapeake Utilities Natural Gas Project. How are you doing today?
Good afternoon. Good, how are you?
Good.
So this is your monthly update from Chesapeake Utilities. And at the time that they wrote the update for us on August 17th, they were 99.9% complete of all the pipeline installation within the city of Salisbury. So they are going through now testing and getting the line activated. So I kind of feel like this could be our last monthly update. And certainly, we could invite Chesapeake in at any time to give, you know, more detail on the project. But I think this is, we're going to see a very similar update from them next month if we, if we so choose to ask for another one.
Any questions, anybody?
May I? Sure. Two things. One, I think it's worth mentioning that they were highly participatory and well represented at our, at a rail trail meeting. So they came and participated. I don't know that they'll have much long-term participation, but they showed up. They also, and this is a point for follow-up. They did indicate that they would be doing some site improvements in anticipation of the Folk Festival arriving, so before Friday. I don't know that they've done anything other than, I don't even know if they mowed the grass on their site. And they do have site control right now, so I think they should be responsible for it by the property owners. They've been cleaning up their site as they go. So we might want to follow up with them and see what it is they anticipated executing before Friday. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that in the July 6th work session meeting, I guess about 19 minutes into the video, I did ask Jared, and I wanted you to know that he did follow up in regards to put me in contact with Mike at the Northern Southern Railroad. And on July 19th, I finally got ahold of Mike. There was a little tag back and forth. And that was like at 9:54 in the morning. And he was definitely open to the types of landscaping or cityscaping that we had talked about in that work session and was fully open to it, but just needed a plan from the city and what it would look like. I did get his phone number and his name and his email address. And I did share that with you on the 19th, that evening on the 19th, that we were following up with that. So I could definitely email somebody the phone number and his email. But he was definitely open to the movable stuff for the testing. And I do want to thank Jared for coming to the meetings and participating and sharing and following up with me and getting back to me. That was, that was nice.
Thank you. Just to follow up, to be clear, we're not going to ask Norfolk Southern to do any landscaping along their property.
That's not what we, that's not what we asked. That's not what was asked.
Can you say that one more time?
That's not what was asked.
Now, can you say what was asked one more time?
What was it? Okay. As we talked about pretty much for months, is apparently they needed to give permission for anything to go up on there. They were not against planting bushes or trees or anything, anything at all. And fence, da-da-da-da-da. They just need to give permission for anything to be up there on that scape. So we talked about cityscaping. So not that they're going to do it, but if they were going to give any kind of permission to do, to have anything up there.
We're not going to ask to do anything on anyone else's property adjacent to there right away. So it's a moot point.
So that may not be, but...
No, it is.
Well, it may not be. It's always up for discussion.
No, it's a moot point. We're not going to pursue that. We're not going to pursue that with Norfolk Southern at all.
Okay. And I know, is that, is there a pursuit on purchasing a piece of that property along there? At one point, that was a part of the conversation too over the summer, that there was like some type of stretch of way along there adjacent to that. Is that, is not...
We're not trying to purchase anything from Norfolk Southern at this point. We're trying to work with the adjacent other property owners because there is a strip owned by Rainier.
And we're in direct negotiations with them.
Okay.
That's who we're talking to. We're not talking to Norfolk Southern. Essentially, trying to negotiate with railroads is a losing battle. So we're not, we're not going to...
I don't know. This, this guy was pretty open to a cityscape as we've been suggesting for months. So he was open to it.
We have an adopted rail trail plan. We're going to stick to the adopted plan. Which doesn't require communication with Norfolk Southern.
Well, and that has nothing to do with permission for a cityscape on the land. So that would probably be...
It does, because that's the only thing in that corridor that we're going to do. And we're not, you know, there's not a proposal or funding or anything else in that corridor except for the rail trail plan.
Okay. I mean, you know, says you, and that's fine, and that may be it. But that was the, that was the follow-up we had for several months and the discussion that was had for several months. And I just want to thank Jared for coming here, sharing that, and, and giving this the logistics that if there was to be anything on there as far as cityscaping, because it looks so poor there, the whole section looks very tacky, that they would be the ones that would have to get permission if there was anything that would be put back up there. So in fact...
The actual property in question where, where we would want to do improvements, where people can see, isn't Norfolk Southern property. And it is not in their control, and they would have no say in it. It's the Rainier property, which is adjacent to where they have an easement. Where the railroad has an easement.
And for months, Mayor Day, it was, it was told to us in the council that they were the ones that needed to grant permission for anything to go up on there.
On their property. That's correct.
On that stretch. That's, that's what we, that's what we were told for, for months.
Yeah, on their property, in that stretch. But we've successfully been able to avoid that by simply following the plan.
Well, that's a wonderful update and a plan. And I would like to have a, on that stretch of land, right between Evo 13 and the hospital, of who owns what. That would be nice, have that emailed to me.
Well, instead of an email, what you can do is if you go to the city website, salisbury.md, and then if you go to menu, and you go to Resident Services, and then you scroll down to Access Public Mapping and Data Tool. Right on there, there's Housing Property and Zoning Viewer. And you can click on any property and see who owns it.
Well, that, that piece of stretch apparently has several, is a little confusing to me. Just, I would like to have that broken out for me.
Well, I don't think staff's going to spend that time, but I'll screenshot it for you.
Anything else? Michelle, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is a budget amendment for a grant match for the zoo, special events pavilion. Mrs. Pollitt?
Okay. So the, this budget amendment for the zoo is for the Zoo Pavilion Project Phase 2. So we had received program open space money for Phase 1 of the Zoo Pavilion Project, which includes some renovations to the restrooms at the zoo. In the budget ordinance this year, we also included match for POS funds for a project that we had requested for the existing tennis courts. But we did not get that project through POS. What we did get a positive feedback that we will get Phase 2 of the Zoo Pavilion Project. So we'd like to move the grant match that was allocated to the tennis court project, move it to the zoo project. Because the zoo project is going to happen, and the tennis courts at this point has not been funded through POS. And since we have already allocated, it was $71,000 worth of match. We know we can spend it on the Zoo Pavilion Project. So we would like to reallocate that match so it's not just sitting there unused, since we do not know when we will be able to get the tennis court projects funded through POS.
Are there any questions about this?
Is the pavilion different than the actual administrative office?
Yes.
It's a total different thing.
Yes. Hit that one next.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure that...
The pavilion was in the Zoo Master Plan, and it's a special events pavilion. It's located inside the zoo. So it is a brand-new, brand-new pavilion.
Okay.
And it fits a much-needed space. Michelle, any questions?
No. Let's move on.
Okay. Everybody in favor of moving this forward?
Yes.
Okay. If we have consensus, place this on the next regular meeting. Next up is the budget amendment for the Zoo Administration Office space project.
Okay. So this is the existing administration office at the zoo, which is the trailer that's located kind of behind the scenes near the Animal Health Building. And this has been in the budget to replace that trailer and provide a new one. There are some cooperative contracts that we can use for that. So we've been working with vendors to get prices on the new trailer. And essentially, all the prices that we've received have been more than what we have in the budget. Part of that is because it is in the floodplain, so there are some things that we need to do, the foundation that weren't anticipated when this budget came through. So what we are asking to do with this budget amendment is the, the project is funded through a bond allocation, and this is the last item in that bond. And so we would like to move all the available interest revenue to this project. So this would cover not only the, the overage on the amount of the trailer, but then the other work that we need to do that field operations will be doing with utilities and site work. They're going to do the demo, so we'll have tipping fees and, and all sorts of other costs. So that is what would be included in this budget amendment. But like I said, this is for interest revenue reallocation to that project.
Anybody, any questions or comments?
No, I recently did a visit out there to that, and that's, I was...
It needs it desperately.
Yeah. That was shocking.
I was out there this summer. Oh, yeah.
It's a little shocking there.
We need something better, so...
If this goes through, our goal is, once this passes at the next meeting, I'd like to have the award of bids for the new trailer. So we're, we're moving quickly on it if this amendment goes through.
Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Looks like we have consensus, so we'll place this on our next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pollitt. Next up, we have our, our draft for the port feasibility study. Mrs. Seaton?
Good afternoon, everyone. Over the past few months, I've had the pleasure to work with CPCS TransCom and Century Engineering on the port feasibility study. And I am happy to announce that we are nearing the completion of this project. So what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Eric Oberhart with CPCS, and he'll run us through the presentation of all their findings.
Thanks, Laura. My colleague Kristin is in the Zoom waiting room. I don't know who's got control of the waiting room. But if you can let her in, that'll be helpful too for some questions and comments there at the end. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen as well here in a moment. Everybody see PowerPoints live? Up on your screen there?
Oh, here she is.
Okay. Great. Sounds good. I know everybody's time is, is really important here, so I'll move forward into the, into the 10-minute presentation here to talk about some of the findings and then also give you an opportunity to ask some questions at the end there. So hello, my name is Eric Oberhart, Senior Consultant with CPCS TransCom, working with Laura and some other folks in the city over the past nine, 10 months on this feasibility study. Also joined by my colleague Kristin Hartpence, who's also on the phone today. And as I said, I just want to give you a quick, quick overview of what's, what's in the report. We're delivering a draft final report document to the city this week, so you'll also have an opportunity to go deeper into some of the details with that later this week and into next week. So, little bit of background information. Project objective. What we're trying to accomplish here was to get a better understanding of whether or not a multi-user port facility, so a facility serving multiple businesses or multiple types of cargo, could be economically and physically feasible in Salisbury. And if a facility like this was feasible, you know, what kind of potential benefits would the city expect to see from development of a facility like this? For a little bit of background information for those of you who maybe aren't as familiar with marine operations at the port, there are six terminals in the area. We've also highlighted the North Prong area up the top, because that'll come into play in some of the discussions later on in this slide deck. But we also have a number of facilities on the main branch of the river handling both aggregate materials as well as fuel. Just a quick overview of the history of port operations in the region. The existing privately-owned maritime facilities in Salisbury are significant receivers of fuel, aggregate, such as gravel, and agricultural products, not only for the city, but also for communities across the Delmarva Peninsula. And so one of the important things to note here, in 2019, the most recent year, we have data from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. There were about 1.03 million tons of cargo handled at the port. And almost all of that tonnage was inbound, bound for Salisbury and other communities in the area. And the important thing to note here is that that 1 million ton threshold is important because the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers kind of has a designation that ports that handle more than 1 million tons of cargo each year are economically significant. And because of that designation, it's a little bit easier for them to compete and receive and be designated for dredging support funding from the Army Corps of Engineers. By comparison, if your, if your annual tonnage is below 1 million tons a year and consistently below that number, and you lose that economically significant designator, it becomes a little more difficult to secure dredging support in the future. So that's an important thing to note here. Other thing just to note on the, on the graph that right there, it's kind of a pretty significant decline from 2004 to kind of the recession, 2009, 2010. But things have recovered somewhat since then. So one of the big things that we started out with for this project is looking at opportunities for development. One of the big things that we found is there's opportunities for growth in existing cargoes with existing users at the port. And a key weakness and threat for maritime operations in the region is the need for ongoing dredging support. So in terms of strengths, Salisbury is in a really good position relative to a lot of other communities on the Delmarva Peninsula because it has really robust existing maritime facilities and really strong traffic base relative to most other communities with some kind of maritime facilities. It's also got the advantage of being pretty well centrally located and therefore able to kind of distribute goods to a pretty wide area outside of the city. There are some weaknesses, right? We talked a little bit about that ongoing need for dredging. There's also the fact that the river channel depth and size limits the size of vessels that can get in and out of the port. And also, you know, historically, the city has not really had much of a hand in port development. So this is kind of a new subject area for the city. In terms of opportunities and threats, as I mentioned, we expect to see some growth in existing port cargoes. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. But there's also some opportunities to support community redevelopment and support the economic health of existing businesses in the Salisbury area. We'll talk a little bit more about that as well. In terms of threats to the port or threats to port development, you know, the really big one here again is that topic of declining tonnage. You know, if the, if the amount of maritime tonnage handled in Salisbury dips below 1 million tons and kind of sustained below 1 million tons in the future, there's the potential of loss of regular dredging support from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. You know, also talking about port development, there's also this potential threat, inability to recoup some of the development costs or potential future competitor development elsewhere in the region. But I think one of the, one of the interesting ways to talk about this is, you know, what can port development do for Salisbury? What can't it do? And in reviewing all of the literature that we have on the city, the Army Corps of Engineers data, the consultations we've done with industries in the region, we think that port development can provide a couple of public benefits. You know, it can enable growth at some existing businesses that already use the water. It can preserve cost-effective and energy-efficient supply chains for local businesses and residents because barge shipping is much more cost-effective and energy-efficient for large bulk loads, things like large loads of gravel, large loads of fuel, things like that relative to rail or truck shipping. It can also help preserve activity and employment in other water-related businesses, such as Chesapeake Shipbuilding. And it can also support community goals, such as the redevelopment of the North Prong. You know, for example, if a new facility was constructed on the main branch and existing users were relocated elsewhere, that might open up the city to help redevelop some of these other areas that the city's expressed interest in before. I think it is really important to note though that port development should not be seen as a way to substantially increase the diversity of businesses in Salisbury. And we looked at a large variety of cargo types that are traditionally handled by water or by barge. And there were not many opportunities to attract new cargoes. Instead, what we've seen is opportunities for growth in existing cargoes in the area. So one of the questions that comes out of that is, you know, why does the city need to be involved in port development? You know, if there's, if there's benefits to private businesses, you know, why haven't they gone and done this development themselves? Why does the city need to be involved? And one of the things we learned from our consultations was that port development process, you know, really needs information and coordination to be realized. One of the important things that we heard from a lot of people was that people were not, you know, existing port users or potential port users were not really engaged or interested in port development largely because of uncertainty. You know, it's a big upfront investment to build these facilities in the first point. And they're kind of unsure, like what is, what is the city's intention as it relates to maritime transportation? And some of these port properties and things like that. Basically, why would I make this kind of uncertain investment if I don't know kind of where the city views its role in maritime transportation and the development of waterfront and things like that? So in short, one of the things that emerges is this idea that the city can play a really important role in information sharing and coordination among various potential port users to basically help them understand what the value of the port facility would be and hopefully also help kind of assemble funding and things like that in the future. And so we came up with a few specific ways that Salisbury can support port development. And there's kind of a four-step or a four, kind of four-level approach here. You know, the first thing that the city should consider doing is adopting some kind of maritime policy that really just, you know, formalizes and clarifies what the city's role would be in supporting the maritime system in the city and what its role would be in regards to port development. Again, it's supposed to give a little more certainty to private partners. In regards to partnership, the city can look at creating something like a port administration to govern port development in the future and also can act as a sponsor or a partner in applying for grants for facility development in the future that may not be available just simply to private sector stakeholders. In terms of programs, there's also the topic of the development of a port administration. Talk a little bit more about that in the following slide. And then in regards to projects, we have our partner, Century Engineering, who did some initial designs and cost estimates to better understand what a potential port facility could look like for the city. Just to briefly talk about the port authority concept. One of the ideas here is that, you know, the city does not necessarily have a lot of expertise or a lot of kind of human resources capacity on its own to engage in port development. And so it might want to think about setting up something like port authority, where you have a paid or volunteer advisory board made up of subject matter experts who can guide port development. So these would be folks with experience in economic development, maritime operations, maritime engineering, environmental policy, and things like that. You can also have a port administration that answers to that port board, that would have one to two port staff, basically doing day-to-day operations, but also doing business development and working with the users of the port. In that, in that lighter blue color, we have Steve Evidors. Those are the folks who'd be handling cargo. In this particular case for Salisbury, that might not be necessary because potential port tenants could conduct their own cargo handling. And then one other thing to note here is that there is a bit of a firewall between the port board and the users of the port. And the idea that here is, you don't necessarily want your port users being the ones determining who should be, you know, who should be setting rates and things like that for use of the port. And there's a variety of potential revenue sources the city can use to capture, capture revenue from these operations and pay off both the operation of the port as well as the construction costs over time. This is talked a little bit more in detail in the draft final report. As I mentioned earlier, one of the other things we did was had our engineering partner, Century Engineering, sketch out, I think, kind of a high-level overview of what a potential port facility could look like. And so this is a facility off Marine Road over by Center Point Terminal and downstream from Vulcan, Cato Oil and Chesapeake Shipbuilding. And what they've done here is sketched out a potential port facility based on the two likely types of cargo that it would handle, the first being aggregate materials and the second being agricultural products. And there's a, there's a whole list of kind of the necessary infrastructure improvements for the facility and for the port listed in the report. I'm not going to go into detail on them here. Bottom line, you know, for public interest, Marine Road upgrades are included in those cost estimates and in those plans to improve drainage, increase length, and provide parking space as well for folks. Another thing to note here is that the facility has been set back from the water as best they can, so you have a buffer of trees between the waterfront and the actual cargo handling equipment itself, trying to kind of reduce some of the impacts on neighboring neighborhoods as well. So ultimately, here's the balance sheet or a summary of what the city would kind of expect to pay and what you could kind of expect to get out of facility development like this. You know, in cost of investment, Century estimates about $22.8 million for port infrastructure. And we estimate about $270,000 a year for the costs of the administration. Obviously, you can try and recoup some of that, some of that cost from terminal users and also apply for federal and state grant support to support the initial infrastructure investment as well. Depending on what's constructed and who ultimately signs up for the port, we estimate that the tonnage increase could be between 50,000 and 125,000 tons a year. And translating that into truck traffic or truck trips out of the port, you could expect to see about 2,000 additional truck trips a year or 4,700 truck trips a year at the highest case with most tonnage. Kind of for reference, you know, if you were to look at Salisbury Parkway that has 1,900 trucks per day on average, and you would be adding between five and 18 trucks per day, depending on what times of day those trucks are operating and kind of how much tonnage is, is tracked into the new port in the future. In terms of benefits and opportunities, one of the really big things here is that, you know, an increase in tonnage would sustain U.S. Army Corps of Engineers dredging support and basically avoid some of the impacts of loss of navigation on the river. In particular, you know, looking at the tonnage of cargo that's handled by barge service, you know, it currently replaces about 38,000 to 40,000 longer distance truck trips each year. And if all of the cargo that currently moved into Salisbury by barge had to move by either truck or by rail, you'd see relatively higher air emissions, spill rates in the case of fuel, roadway damage, and also shipping costs if things were moving by other modes of transportation. And it's also important to note that the Army Corps of Engineers allocates about $4 million a year for dredging support on the river. And so if the, if the community wanted to try and kind of provide that support on their own, that's kind of the expected price tag based on previous Army Corps of Engineers records for how much would be, how much it would cost to maintain the river in the future if the Army Corps was not doing that. Some other benefits and opportunities, again, the opportunity to reserve employment at other water-related firms like the shipyard that also rely on the maintenance of the navigational channel. Opportunity for expansion for some local businesses who've expressed an potential interest in this facility. And then also, again, this idea that potentially relocating some users off of the North Prong could potentially free up that area for redevelopment, either as recreational space or as residential or commercial space, which could also potentially increase property values and tax receipts in the future. So that's a very high-level and brief summary of the, of the port study. As I mentioned, we have a draft report coming out this week. So if you want to get in touch with Laura, she can share a copy of that with you when we give that to her. But yes, that's, that's kind of a quick 30,000-foot view. Does anybody have any questions?
May I, before we, because I have to slip out? So Eric, thank you. Thanks to you and your team. And Laura, thank you for managing this project. And thanks to EDA for funding it. Couple of things that I want to just share for people's consideration, for the council's consideration, as I'm sure there will be further discussion tonight. But a couple of things. Political landscape. Senator Carden and Senator Van Hollen have both worked very hard and publicly committed on several occasions that they will never let the dredging money go to the wayside. We shouldn't take that as a reason not to work hard for growing our port. But I do think we've got a lot of support from our federal delegation. we've got a lot of support from our federal delegation, or at least our senators, for keeping that port funding in the flesh. Second thing to consider is that, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of, a lot of good opportunity here, but there's also some things that are working in our favor such as Chesapeake Shipbuilding's expansion. Part of this is public, you know, the, what we've all seen is on the planning commission agenda, they've had two new buildings proposed, a massive new structure for building new cruise ships at an expanded rate, and then a new administration building, a new headquarters building, pretty major addition of people to that site, but they're busting at the seams. And then, you know, the city has been working on acquisition of land in the North Prong area. We've got some of it owned for the North Prong Park Plan to execute that. But in order to ever get there, one of the things that will have to happen is to get the active users out of the land that we want. So we do have that issue, as was mentioned by Eric, that we've got to confront at some point. Then one other thing to think about is the scale of the waterside infrastructure there, I think we will run into, just so everyone's aware, that we'll run into some opposition from the residential land users across the river. So I would say everyone should be eyes wide open going into this, that scale may be one of the things that has to be discussed or even positioning, but, you know, I do think we will run into that at some point in this process. It's not a reason not to do things, but it's certainly something that we're going to have to confront. And let's see, was there anything else? I think that's all I've got, and I'm sorry that I have to slip out.
Yeah, that's fine.
Don't do it.
Yeah.
We don't have anything going on this week, so.
I'll come back if I can.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Um, I, I do. Don't have any more. Eric, I did hear you say something in reference to North Prong as far as the redevelopment in that area. I heard you said recreational, but I didn't hear a couple of the other things that you said you were willing to, you know, do if you were to redevelop the area.
Yeah, yeah, so we mentioned recreation, you know, on the, on the, one of those previous slides, I had the map from one of the prior city plans with kind of the recreation option for redeveloping that area. But in the report too, we looked at, you know, if, if the properties next to the North Prong were redeveloped as commercial or residential space, what the potential land value increase and what the potential kind of tax receipts could be from those redevelopment tasks. So the value proposition for the North Prong, you know, it's multiple. It could be recreational, it could be commercial and residential, or it could be some combination of all three of those things. And the report primarily talks about the potential benefits for redevelopment to residential or commercial, so it's got kind of the math for potential tax receipt increases and land value increases and things like that attached to it.
Okay, now is that recreational simply because there may be a contamination issue there with the soil?
Yeah, looking at the actual redevelopment of those sites was outside of the scope of this study, so just knowing kind of the industrial history of it, I wouldn't be surprised if there were some kind of waterfront brownfield issues there, either with soil contamination or sediment contamination in the water itself. But that's not a consideration we looked at because we were focused primarily in regards to kind of the heavy engineering and planning work on the potential facility, which would have been developed on the main branch of the river.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Boda, FMA. The, the plan that he was referencing is the North Prong Park Plan that we worked with the city planner and College Park to help us come up with that. And it is a mixed-use plan of residential some redevelopment of the property, so that is where that's coming from, his要点 points.
Spike, do you have any questions, comment?
Well, no, I think it's, I, I'd like to have more time to look at it. I have all the slides. I actually printed out every slide at home and taped them together because, I mean, it's very comprehensive and I think, I mean, it's very good. It was very good and I, it's a lot to absorb just getting it for a couple days. I just have to go through it. I do, you know, I'm worried about some of that redevelopment in residential, but it's a mixed redevelopment, it's going right off, and then the Fitzwater area with some comments and concerns with some of those residents. But I think it's a solid idea and it's a solid, well-put-together concept. We definitely need more discussions about it and to get more understanding about what parts are really reasonable or practical, what we can actually do for the price tag and looking at even some of the other impacts that are aligned in the study with truck traffic, the increase of truck traffic. And one of the things that has been a big bite with that particular section is truck traffic. And this could potentially increase that, but how would we offset that impact? I don't, I don't know. But going forward, I can see this is a very good template to really, really dig into it. I mean, this is a, definitely a bigger conversation.
No, actually. Mrs. Gregory, any comments, questions?
No, no questions.
I think, you know, and there's going to be a couple of steps here that I, that I think Laura's going to be taking back as far as partnering with local businesses and even reaching out to see, you know, from our, you know, so that we can understand who's, who's going to benefit and then who's at that table to be a part of that discussion as we, as we move forward with plans and stuff. So I think, you know, like Mrs. Blake said, this is, this is a good start. And there's been a couple of plans on the North Prong over the past year and I think over the past 50 years, there's probably been about 70 plans and studies done. And all of them typically say the same thing. You know, they typically come to similar conclusions. And, you know, there is some concerns with the properties there on North Prong as, you know, the city's acquired one that definitely there's, there's not much we can do with it, but put stuff on top of it, we can't dig there. So, yeah, so I think this is, you know, as the mayor alluded to, both of our senators are committed to ensuring that, you know, we, that they're doing their part, ensuring their U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is dredging and then, you know, there's some stuff that we got to do to, on our part. And I think looking at the future and what we want to do and how it's going to benefit our business community, but also be aware of resident concerns on, on everything. So, so I, you know, I guess that's going to be a plan where I guess you're going to partner with future meetings because this is going to be multiple discussions.
I love the graphs. I love the graphs. They help people like me and it puts, it puts what's in the words into a visual. And this has really been helpful, I appreciate that.
And I'm really looking forward to them providing the draft final report because it's a very comprehensive report and it will, they've done top-notch work. Everything they've provided is succinct, to the point, very informative. They call out what's important, so I'm, I'm looking forward to providing that to you, to the council, for review.
And I also like the way he put, it's in here, partnership, because you're going to have the partnership with not only businesses, but the actual community. You're going to have to. I mean, because this is going to be something real big for everybody. This is going to be just like the roundabouts for people. It's new, unusual and chaotic. So, I mean, seriously, but, and people are going to really need to, the community is going to have to come in for all the changes to let them know each step. The community should be involved with it because they're going to be a part of it. So that's one of my main things, just having everybody who is going to be involved in this to make this change, them to be there. Getting them there, don't know, but they need to be a part, so, on every, on every hand.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. If there's anything else, Laura, you have anything? Amanda, I know you're probably going to be a part of this as well.
She's done a part of it.
The committee went on the whole time, so we're, we're up to speed on it.
Okay, all right, thank you. We appreciate your presentation.
Well done.
Well done, and I'm sure we'll be in touch.
Sounds good. Well, thank you all for the opportunity to present. I'm looking forward to sharing with that draft report with you soon. And, yeah, it's, it's both succinct. We've got a two-page executive summary, about a 30-page report, and then 60 pages of appendices. So it's in there. But I'm looking forward to sharing that with you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I'll just include the graphs.
Sixty. Just leave us this.
Include the graphs.
Hey, wait a minute, just give this to us.
I know, because that, it does help.
All right, next item on the agenda is the fortune telling license.
And Michael?
Yeah, I was going to say, for better of words, do you want me to take it or something?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so following our last meeting, it seemed pretty clear to me that if there was one overarching takeaway, it was to pare down the legislation that was provided to you, also streamline the process as much as possible. So here's what we intended to do. First and foremost, we intended to make it a very straightforward process that limited as much of the administration's time and attention to something that, in my opinion, is similar with respect to other city-issued licenses, but just so happens to deal with a different business venture. And what we've done here is we struck out the second sentence of the definitions, so we don't talk about the religious aspect or anything of that nature. In addition, if you want to engage in the business of fortune telling, then you need to have fortune telling licenses, that simple. Here's a good question that Laura brought up. It's not guaranteed that each and every individual who is licensed to practice fortune telling in the city of Salisbury is going to have a primary place of business. Instead, it's very possible that individuals that are licensed to practice fortune telling in the city of Salisbury are going to be those individuals that are called to other places of business, maybe called to events, who knows? Those individuals are certainly subject to this ordinance. The only thing is, is that there is a criteria for the issuance of the fortune telling license, and that's in subsection D of section 528040, which is on your second page. And that provides that an applicant for a fortune telling license under this chapter shall submit proof of an inspection of the premises? Well, if the individual doesn't have a primary place of business, then as I suggested to Laura and I would hope would be the case, that whenever an individual applies for that license, they would simply inform the director of business development, I don't have a primary place of business. To the extent I'm going to do that, or to the extent that I'm going to have a primary place of business, it'll be at my residence. Well, that should all be criteria that they inform the license issuer of. Those should be considerations that are taken account of when deciding whether or not to issue the license. You'll notice here that except for referring the person to the Salisbury Police Department and the Fire Department, or specifically the Chief of Police and the Chief of Fire Department to effectively do a very basic incursory background check on the applicant, there's no other involvement with respect to law enforcement. It was yours truly decision on the cutting board to get rid of the fingerprint criteria. Truth be told, I think that the city really opens itself up to unnecessary liability holding fingerprint information for an individual that's simply seeking a fortune telling license. Look, these licenses are good for 12 months. If a person has a devout interest in, and I mean that term with no religious context whatsoever, if they have a very serious interest in performing fortune telling, then they're going to comply with the restrictions. If they don't, then they're probably not going to comply. If they don't comply, one of the most basic reasons already outlined explicitly in the ordinance for denial of an application renewal is their failure to comply with the ordinance to begin with. So if you don't comply, you're not going to get your license renewed. I think on the whole, when we're talking kind of 5,000-foot view here, the number of fortune telling licenses the city is going to issue in a 12-month period are not going to be priority number one for all departments. I'm really confident in that prediction. Accordingly, I don't think that the city necessarily wants to impose on Business Development Department, which is already overseeing things like what's going outside, the establishment of a potential port authority, I don't know, anything else that you can imagine, especially in this downtown corridor, that all falls on her shoulders. So if she's having to spend considerable amount of time checking with SPD on background checks and interviews and recommendations and the like, well, that's less time than she's going to have to do other things. In addition, the more steps that she has to follow through on in terms of making sure that this person is someone you deem, because ultimately it's a subjective decision based on objective criteria. You deem to be a person who's eligible and responsible enough for the issuance of a fortune telling license. Well, those are decisions that ultimately can come back on you and therefore the city because they were made with some level of subjective, sub-subjectiveness, subjectivity that would, in this particular case, be the one thing that you don't want to have happen here, which is a non-uniform enforcement of an ordinance that impacts a very small percentage of your population. So to make it as uniform as possible, you make it as basic as possible. And that's what we've done here. Truth be told, I think that you guys could impose this fortune telling license three, four weeks from now and it would run very smoothly. And the reason for that is because you effectively have two to three steps involved in the process. You accept the application, you make sure that it's fine, now the application, I don't know yet. But here's what I can tell you. In terms of city-issued licenses right this second, you issue licenses, and I pulled it up just for this very conversation, right now, you issue licenses for adult entertainment businesses, auctions, bankrupt fire and closeout sales, boxing matches, cable television franchises, which is something totally different, coin-operated machines, fortune telling, transient merchants and mobile vendors, probably your most ubiquitous form of license, door-to-door solicitors, junkyard and secondhand dealers, miniature golf courses, plays, concerts, circuses, pools, poolrooms and bowling alleys, restaurants, probably second most ubiquitous, skating rinks, theaters, towing companies, probably a pretty popular license, and hotels. So with respect to this license, there were three existing licenses I modeled this off of. And I kid you not, you can go in, you can check these ordinances out and you're going to find the exact same language contained there in. And they are hotels, chapter 5.68, towing companies, we did that with respect to the issuance and researching the individuals, 5.64, and then finally restaurants, 5.52. Didn't look at any others, didn't need to. These are your three most popular by far. So how are your three most popular licenses currently being issued? All right, well, they're being issued pretty seamlessly. Don't see a lot of complaints about it, at least they don't reach my desk, don't reach the mayor's office, otherwise I presume I'd hear about. And so modeling this license off of those three licenses right now, which are running fairly smoothly, and if you disagree, please let me know, seemed to be the way to treat this. Because not necessarily the fortune telling is going to become so popular as opening a restaurant, but rather that if opening a restaurant has a process that is significantly simpler and more straightforward than getting a license to fortune telling, to me, that seems like you've done it backwards. And instead, you should be modeling what is more than likely your most possible, your most popular license as you're licensing legislation moving forward. So that's what's been done here. I would say all in all, probably chopped it about six pages. I would say, all in all, probably chopped it about six pages, and we've gotten rid of the appeal process, because, truth be told, the appeal process just lends itself for additional liability. If an individual is going to be aggrieved at your denial of the license, they're going to showcase their disagreement in ways that they're going to showcase that disagreement with or without a hearing. And by having a hearing, it does nothing than force you to attend, plan, and effectively say exactly what you said to the individual when you denied their licensing application. So other than that, I don't have anything more to add.
Questions or comments?
I totally, 100% love the simplicity of the boom-boom-boom. And if it's similar to what we're already doing, I think it's a lot better than all that other, it was too much. And so this is, this is much better.
I will note that there is no discount for the renewal of the license, it's $100 each year.
I like the fact that it's been pared down and all these unnecessary stuff has been trimmed out. I think this is good.
Laura, if you were ever asked a question by an individual who applied for a fortune telling license, received one, but did not have a primary place of business, and their question should be to you, "How do I exhibit my license? The ordinance requires me to prominently exhibit my license." Much like, for me, the easiest example is when you get your haircut, right? You always see that individual's license prominently showcased. Tell them to carry it with them in their car.
We, the citizen that spurred this conversation and these changes was like, "Can we get a badge that we can flash in our wallet?" So that, not necessarily a badge, but, you know, a card.
A placard, like a little placard.
Yeah, or just something that, you know, even if it's just a card that they could carry on card stock that, you know, has all the printed information, that's, that is something under consideration, so.
Simple. Simple and easy.
Yeah, I'm, thank you for paring that down and simplifying it, I think that the approach you took was, you know, the right one, and I applaud that, so thank you very much. You know, this is already on the agenda, so, but I guess everybody, do we have to do a?
No. We've approved it for first reading, we've discussed it.
That's expired.
Um, sixty days, no. It could go on Monday for a second.
So do we need to, like, make an amendment to this?
On Monday, yes.
Here's.
Yeah, so we just make the amendment as read?
So here's how I would suggest doing the amendments, if you wanted to just take it up on second reading. I would say that we include a red line showing all of the changes compared to the last. Then it would be a motion to accept all amendments as shown in the red line included with the agenda packet.
Okay.
And then you can just move it to second reading.
That'll work.
But that will be second reading.
Oh, no, that's what I meant, and then just go right into the second reading of it.
Simplify, did you? Awesome. All right, any comments from the administration? Since our city administrator is here?
Uh, just that, looks like there's a festival coming to town outside. I was doing site setup with the office today, and it really is coming together, and the crew that comes in and volunteers their time is incredible, so I hope everybody can get out and enjoy this weekend, the weather's looking great, so I hope to see everybody out there.
Counselor?
All I want you to do is just be safe this weekend. Be safe, make sure you're masked up, you social distance, but enjoy, because I'm going to enjoy myself, really I am. And if you have a compromised immune system, please get your booster. Get your booster.
Spike?
Nobody.
Definitely volunteer for the Folk Festival if you have not. You can go to shoregetconnected.org. I'm going to be the bike valet on Friday evening and Saturday, so ride your bikes to the festival, avoid the traffic, so that's exciting, and we have the volunteer meeting tomorrow night at the Civic Center, starting at 5:30. And please, if you are healthy enough, please donate blood for our citizens who need it and need it for a variety of health reasons. Thank you.
Mrs. Gregory?
Just reiterate, please get vaccinated, our vaccination rate is not where it usually needs to be. If you haven't yet, please, please look at that done. You know, our seven-day positive rate is, and we're double-dipping together, and everybody be safe and enjoy the Folk Festival weekend. Let's get everyone vaccinated, please. But yeah, I'm looking forward to Folk Festival, I'm going to be doing, we dance the dollar, I don't know about it, but, yeah, bucket to be.
Oh, nice. Nice.
Yeah, so, see you guys after Friday night, I'll be out there Sunday too, and I'm hoping you're going to enjoy it, have a good time.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, so I'm going to be doing the backstage support. Got four shifts lined up for Saturday and Sunday, so I love doing that. Do you have a question that we have? Is there enough beer? Because last year, I think we ran out on Saturday, or last time.
We are looking for beer and wine volunteers, though, so if anyone would like to volunteer Friday, Saturday, or Sunday.
Oh, there's shifts, there's shifts available.
I was not told beer volunteering, beer and wine volunteering was a thing.
I think it's more Saturday and Sunday.
It's a volunteer, not a taster, okay?
What? What? What?
To answer your question, we put in a large order of alcohol today, so we should be fine.
Just asking for a friend.
I wonder who that friend is.
Also, after the Folk Festival, I think our next big event is the September 2015 Average Joe's Half-K, I have signed up for that, I've been training hard for it. And, so, yeah, so we look forward to seeing everybody this weekend, and thank you, we
are adjourned.